Good evening, everyone. Everyone's coming. So I'm Rachel Sessa. I'm the principal at New Caney Elementary, and I have Sibylle Barra and Patrick Burton, our assistant principals. And we have the privilege of recognizing some of our staff members and one fabulous fifth grader. Ms. Becky. So Becky Rodriguez is one of our amazing ladies who worked in child nutrition. She has a great work ethic, and she was promoted to production coordinator this year. Becky not only takes care of the students at MCE, but she also goes to TLC every day to deliver meals. She is thoughtful and treats everyone with respect, and we are so thankful to have her at its. Linda Gonzalez is one of our hardworking custodians. She keeps our campus clean and safe for all of our students and staff. Thank you for the long hours you work, always preparing our school for visitors and events, and always willing to lend a hand. We appreciate all that you do every single day. And I just have to throw in there, she works the night shift. So she went home to get ready, well, to get her clothes, because she, at first, had missed us. I'm not going to be able to attend. And I said, okay, but how can we make this work? Because I really want to recognize them in front of everyone. So she ran home really quick to get her stuff because she didn't think she was going to come. And then she's going to go back to work after this. So I just, I appreciate everything that you do. Okay, next is Michaela Garcia. She is my secretary, but really, she is the school secretary. She just does it all. She helps me run the school slash she really runs the school. And she's our backup receptionist, a backup registrar. She always goes along with my ideas and makes me laugh. Everyone truly, truly loves her. And I just can't imagine MCE without you, Michaela. So thank you for all that you do. Ashley Smith. She has worked at MCE for the last 18 years, and she's an absolute rock star teacher. She's the first grade team leader, UIL coordinator, a care team member. And honestly, there's too many other roles on our campus for me to remember them all. I know I can depend on Ms. Smith, and she's always willing to help whenever I need a hand. She's one of my go-to people. You know, we all have those. She is truly one of the most caring teachers I have ever worked with. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for being a role model for everyone on our campus. And now, Ms. Kinsley Perry. She is one of our outstanding fifth grade leaders. She's intelligent, kind, hardworking, and thoughtful. And so I asked some of her teachers to share a few thoughts about Kinsley. One of her teachers said, "Kinsley is an amazing student. She is kind, respectful, responsible, and driven. She is on safety patrol and is very responsible with her time. But she will always make sure to come in, say hi to me, ask about the day, and then remind us that she's off to her assignment. I'm so grateful to have her in my class." Another teacher said, "Kinsley's very respectful and is always caring for others around her. She's supportive of her classmates and works hard in everything she does." "Kinsley is an amazing example of a student with integrity. She does the right thing even if teachers are not around. She cares for others and advocates for her peers when needed. She uses the same care and attentions when doing her schoolwork, and she always tries her best." "Kinsley is a super sweet girl and a hard worker. She has a big heart and works hard to include everyone in activities. Kinsley, we are so proud of you and everything that you do at New Caney Elementary, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for you." Thank you for making us this time to recognize our staff members and our wonderful students. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sherri Lo, the principal at Dogwood Elementary. Thank you for letting us be here tonight to spend a few minutes recognizing some of our amazing people. So we're going to go ahead and start. Rosa Sora. She is our cafeteria employee for Dogwood. She is one of our most dependable and amazing cafeteria employees. This is her second year at Dogwood Elementary. However, I can't say she's the best at the register, makes the best of things, or great at one area in particular. She really is everywhere and does everything. She is a hard worker, multi-talented throughout the cafeteria, responsible, and very cooperative and flexible. She always has a smile on her face, positive attitude, and willing to help wherever we need her. So thank you for your service. Okay. For our custodians, Ms. Sylvia Ferris. She also went to work and said she wasn't going to come. We said, no, you're coming. So Sylvia, this year, she actually just joined our team a month ago? It was earlier this year. So I always like to say that our custodial team is el mejor equipo del mundo, the best team in the world. And she came on board and led private to that philosophy and those same beliefs. We have extremely high expectations for our campus. We wanted to look good, smell good, feel good for all of our visitors and our students and our staff members. And she has jumped on board. Our staff members cry about her all the time. And so we're so appreciative of her service, her smile, and we're proud of the work that she does and grateful for her being a part of it. Okay. The next few people. We have a theme. It's called Grow Your Own. So we're going to start with Ms. Lada Conover. She is our teacher. She is a fifth grade dual-language reading language arts and social studies teacher, and she is in her fourth year of teaching here at Dogwood Elementary. She is a proud product of New Caney ISD as she graduated from Porter High School in 2017 and completed the CNAs program while at Porter High School. She quickly realized her calling was education. Rightfully so. She became an instructional parent at Dogwood working at the special education department. She continued her education at Texas Tech and participated in the two-plus-one program where she graduated with her bachelor's degree and with her teaching certification in 2020. She now serves as a mentor for our current student teachers. She is a dual-language team leader, and she's one of the strongest teachers we've had at Dogwood. She is currently pursuing her master's degree from the University of Houston with a specialization in curriculum instruction and dual language. And she will be a part of those five of those graders this year. And we have Alyssa Owen House. She is also a homegrown New Caney ISD product. She graduated from New Caney High School in 2022, where she served at Dogwood Elementary as part of the New Caney High School Teacher Intern Program. And so she interned on our campus in the High Skills Program. And then that summer, we did a parent. And I said, oh, Ms. Owen House, would you like to come join us? So she did, and she has been amazing. You can't tell if she's a teacher or a parent. Most of the time, she's leading the class or group or something. It's extremely significant. And we're super excited because she's at Kent Houston now, and she's working on her education degree. She's going to be in the ed aid program where she can continue working while she becomes a special education teacher, and we will gladly keep her at Dogwood. So congratulations. Lastly, while we're here, I'll also come on over. I'm still going to call it Grow Your Own because he has such great potential, and we want to keep him as well. This is Alonso Juarez. He is a third grade student, and he is an English speaker in the dual-language program where he completes coursework in both English and Spanish. And he's working on becoming fully bilingual and multilingual. Special to note, he's also the first student ever at Dogwood to pay duck bills to be a principal for an hour. So he paved the way for the rest of the students. And he spent the entire time. We did classroom walkthroughs. We checked, made sure the doors were secured. Monitored kids in the hallways, in the bathrooms. He had official badge, official fanny pack, and everything. While Alonso is still unsure what he wants to do after elementary school, he does love watching superhero movies. He loves playing tag at recess. His favorite subject is math, and he loves doing projects and learning new things at school. Best of all, he's friendly. He helps us and always brings a smile to those around him. We are super excited to see what you do next, but my vote is staying here, Dogwood. Thank you, Jen, for allowing us to recognize our people, and thank you for all that you do.
This is round three of the regional board's agenda. The board encourages comments from citizens in the district and for employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as a individual or as a representative of a group, are to do so at this time. The board asks that comments protecting public education issues can be known already to violence. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level the prompt to heckle resolution of complaints and concerns. The policies are available on the district website at www新caneyisd.org. There you are.
Hello, my name is Dawn Eales. First, I'd like to thank New Caney ISD for this opportunity to speak. I'm coming to the board as a concerned parent, guardian, and an advocate for my children and others. As we are all aware and from my current understanding, this district currently has two primary systems regarding classroom assignments. Those systems are Skyward and Canvas. Canvas typically provides a portal for many students to access their electronic assignments, while Skyward is more the official grading mode or system of record for the district. The Skyward platform also provides a method for teachers and staff to document any non-electronic curriculum that might be included in ratings, paper assignments, oral assignments, participation, et cetera. Our teachers and schools are regularly requesting that students, as well as their parents and guardians, review Skyward on a consistent basis to determine what assignments are upcoming, are due, or maybe even missing. As a parent, I have been trying to review Skyward almost daily, especially in a school year with so many new teachers and staff employed in the district. Unfortunately, we have noticed that some assignments did not appear in Skyward until after due dates had already passed. That's extremely problematic. Assignments not being communicated via Skyward in a timely manner significantly removes the power of parents and guardians to properly monitor the success and failure of our children. It is especially true for our students and families that are struggling with lack of some executive skill sets like note-taking, proactive thinking, time management. I am requesting that New Caney ISD Board and senior leadership, please review the policies and procedures regarding posting assignments into Skyward as related to their due dates. If no consistent requirements exist, I'm asking they be created and then communicated to all impacted stakeholders. Example, a district-wide policy that assignments, those that be graded and non-graded, like extracurricular or extracadence, sorry, be published in Skyward no later than 48 hours prior to their assigned due dates. How can we truly help our children if we don't know what and when assignments are expected? I realize that some tonight might be saying that this is a topic for an individual teacher or my school versus the work. Or I've already had people also saying, kids need to take responsibility for knowing what they need to do, and they'll plant parents monitoring so much. I respectfully disagree. Standards and expectations regarding policies and procedures should be clear and not, should be clear and not, and vague. A requirement that assignments be published in Skyward X number of days prior to their due date will help confirm transparency of curriculum and expectations of all parties. We need the board to help establish and confirm consistent policies among our teachers and schools.
Out of the four more on the agenda, it reports the votes of board members. Each year prior to the winter election, the board president requires to announce whether each board member has met the required continuing education training requirement. As of today, all board members have met and exceeded the training requirements.
I wanted to say, as we move into this after our fall break, I want to encourage our administration, our principals, just continue to do what you guys are doing. We know you get up every day and want what's best for the kids. We know you get up every day and want a secure environment. We want a safe environment. We're doing everything that you guys can do. And I want to encourage you, as does our fellow board member, to just encourage you guys to get up and keep doing what you're doing. Keep banging your drum. Letting those other employees know, take this back to your campuses. Let them know, we know you guys do this every day, and do the best you can with what you're given. And I want to just encourage you to move into this next week to do that. Take it back to your campus and continue to encourage those guys to get up every day and work hard. We appreciate what you guys do.
I wanted to make a comment now. Outside of our high-paying positions here on the board, I wanted to say that your fellow board members appreciate Craig and Beth. And a lot of people don't know the outside of your surface here, which, you know, we have so much free time. We spend a lot of time thinking and researching and worrying about the kids and our staff and trying to do everything. But Beth and Craig take it one step further. Craig's completed the Leadership Tasking. Tasking stands for Texas Association of School Boards. And Beth is our Region Six Director, which is over 56 school districts. So we appreciate the time that both of you spend and the thought that you put into it and to keep Tasking on track with what our beliefs are, because it can get off the rails really quickly in education. That's why we're not, Tasking is not a member of NASB, National Association of School Boards. But Tasking withdrew from that until we can get a nonpartisan commitment from them regarding public education. So I appreciate all the work you put in. I appreciate all the work you put in, and I'm sure everybody else does too, because I've done some minor sense. My arms hurt here.
Well, thank you for what you bring back.
Thank you.
Because I'm not going to.
Out of my agenda, it's superintendent report for the vice chair. This is, I want to ask the speaker to come up and give us a multilingual department update. So I heard you leave your presentation up. Got some special guests appearing.
Okay, well, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to come up and speak to you all today. My name is Angela Kiebers, and I'm the director of multilingual Title III and migrants. And I have my amazing team here today as students that have asked to come and share some information with you all as well. So I'm going to introduce my department. We have Mayra Azaray. She is specifically with our elementary campuses. We have Gabi Oliveros in NASB. She works with our secondary. And then we have Dona Beza Villareva. And she works with elementary as well. So this is our team. And they are amazing, and they do a great job. And I'm really proud of them and the work that we've accomplished through that here and months that we've been in this position. So our multilingual focus, basically, this is our goal. So our goal for my department is to provide our teachers, administrators, multilingual coaches, families, continue helping them in our emergent bilinguals at our New Caney ISD. And of course, you all know that we have an amazing dual-language program. And so part of that goal is also to support, you know, all bilingual students, not only our emergent bilinguals. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our numbers in New Caney ISD. We all know who we are, but sometimes it's good to see the numbers. So in New Caney ISD, which is a small district, still kind of small, right? We have 42 languages that are spoken, which is, you wouldn't think that. But there's, Spanish is still probably our second language, but there's a lot of other languages that are spoken. We have 3,617 dual-language students that participate in our pre-k through fifth grade program. We have 6,639 emergent bilingual students. So these are students who are learning English as a second language. They may not necessarily be in our dual-language program because maybe they have a second language that is something else other than Spanish. And then we have 373 newcomers. And as the world is changing, and we all have seen the news, our newcomers are actually newcomers from not only Latin America and Mexico, but we have students who are here from Ukraine that are here on our sailing. So it's interesting to see those dynamics and how we as teachers and our teachers, how we can support them to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students. And then we have 23 migrant students. I'm really proud of our migrant students, and I want to make sure that we don't, I know that for me, it was a learning curve. We always think of migrant students and we hear in the news. Our migrant students and our immigrant students are two different groups. So our migrant students are students who are here who may actually not be bilingual students that are actually families. So we have 23 families in our district that work with crops, with agriculture. And so they actually travel with the crops. And those families specifically have different needs because they may be here for the school year. When it comes to start testing, they leave and they go up north. And so working with those families to make sure that, you know, that they have housing, are they living with a family? Are their needs being met? And so working with those migrant families, we've learned a lot. Gabi is helping with that, supporting those families. And so it's very unique, the work that they do. And it's important because they're the families that put the food that comes into our homes. But it's also very different in that, you know, a lot of them have been here for generations and generations. And so there's a lot of opportunities for those students. And then we offer Spanish and French. One of my goals is to eventually hopefully expand that to a different language, another language as well. But for right now, that's what we offer at the secondary level. So we know that New Caney has a dual-language program. I don't know if you all are aware, but New Caney is very unique in that we, I guess, our neighbors to the north and around us, other school districts, do not have a dual-language program like the one we do. Their students, they're English speakers. It's very selective, whereas for us, we allow students, if their parents wish to provide them that gift of a second language, we allow them that opportunity. And for a lot of the students, that may not be a possibility if they are in the neighboring school district. So it's very unique in that. Anytime that I or our colleagues travel to conferences or talk to other directors, it's, they're always like, how do you do it? Because we're only able to do it to second grade, and it's not at every school. And so New Caney is very unique in that in that we provide those opportunities, and those opportunities are available to any student. I was referring to this program, but it's very open. And most of our students are allowed to come into the program. So it's unique, and I think it's something that you all should be very proud of. So of course, our three goals for our dual-language program is to be bilingual and multilingual. So we're accomplishing that by, you know, providing the supports in English and Spanish to our students to produce that academic achievement. We all know that research shows us that it takes five to seven years in the ideal setting to learn a second language. We all know that hope can happen. But even then, we all know that when you actually look at the hard data, the numbers, students who are in dual language, whether that's Spanish, learning a second language Spanish, or learning a second language of English, they outperform their peers. And so that's something that we're pushing forward. And we're going to, I think right now we're seeing the impacts of COVID, but it's something that's definitely there. And then our third goal for that is to provide that social-cultural competence. Again, we know kind of where our world is at. And just, we don't all have to have the same beliefs, but we have to be able to understand those cultural differences that we all have. And so that's our third goal at the district. And then, in your package, you'll actually see a bit in the very back. It's the very last page. Then it's a little bit about what happens after fifth grade. And I didn't want to just give it to you in the small page, but it's the very last page. So we know that our fifth graders receive Spanish one credit after fifth grade if they meet the three requirements. So there's a couple of things that DEA has asked that our students must meet in order to be able to continue to receive that credit. But if they don't, they still have the opportunity to take Spanish for Spanish speakers one as a sixth grader. And if they do receive the credit, they will take a special topics class. And seventh grade, they take Spanish for Spanish speakers two. And then in eighth grade, they take Spanish for Spanish speakers three. And then in ninth grade, we've added this year or this coming school year where they will have the option of going into either Spanish for Spanish speakers four or AP Spanish. And so that gives those students who are ready to make that next step and continue learning or continue with that second language to continue growing, and it also allows some other opportunities in high school. But next, what I really want you to hear, and I think the reason our dual-language program is so impactful because of the students that we have. So I've invited two students that have it to share with you kind of their experiences with our dual-language program. So our first student is Kara Harvey. She's a seventh grader who attends New Caney School since kindergarten. And she's been in dual-language classes since day one. Her Spanish kindergarten teacher affectionately called her Carita. And it's funny because I just saw some of her teachers that are here, and they still call her Carita because she was so itty-bitty and the name just kind of stuck. She loves and excels in all things academic and fine arts. She's an avid reader and enjoys listening, singing along, playing all types of music. She participated in the UKIS summer musical camps and Pine Valley Spanish and Rose West Club. And she is currently in Pine Valley's band as a percussionist choir and is practicing for the upcoming production of Miss Nelson's missing scene. Her art was selected for UKIS rodeo art competition in 2020. She participated, has participated in UIL since second grade. Outside of school, she's a servant leader at church, working with babies and toddlers or behind the sound booth in production nearly all week. All in all, she's an amazing young lady whose joy is in textures that we have, we have the pleasure of knowing her. So she's going to share a little bit about dual language and how it has impacted her lives and moving forward, but she's going to do.
Hola, mi nombre es Kara. Soy miembro de la programa de dual lenguaje para ocho años. Mi experiencia fue muy bien y he amado cada minuto. Hi, my name is Kara. I'm a member of the dual language program and have been in it for eight years now. I have loved every minute. I started my journey in kindergarten. I did a presentation of our red pandas in front of all the kindergarten parents. Afterwards, I remembered how many parents complimented my Spanish skills, but I was still so shy. In first grade, my teachers worked with me on how to speak up and overcome my shyness. At the end of the year, I was chosen to introduce the dual language showcase to everyone in Spanish. And when I was finished, I was shocked with the spontaneous cheering that erupted. My teacher also told my mom that I was already fully bilingual in just two years. As I got older, I had opportunities to use my Spanish to be a school newscaster. Also, my family made me use my Spanish to order our food at Taco Trucks. Recently, my neighborhood had a garage sale. There were several families and only spoke Spanish. And thanks to the dual language program, I was able to speak to them in some more idioms. At first, obviously, my parents were the ones who chose dual language for me. But this year, I had to make the hard decision between athletics and Spanish. I decided to stay in Spanish because being bilingual will really help me in the future to achieve my goals and dreams. When I grow up, I want to be an entrepreneur. My dream is to own a cafe. Being able to communicate in Spanish will set my business apart and I believe it'll open up more opportunities for me. I'm so blessed to be a part of the dual language program. Gracias por creando esta oportunidad para yo y otros discutidos y actores como yo. Thank you for creating opportunities for me and so many others like me.
She did an amazing job and we did rehearse that. I think she came up with it all by herself and we received a lot of pride. I think we have some tears in here. Our next student that we have. This is Andrea Lera. And so as you know, our dual language serves both populations where English students can learn a second language and the first language because keep their language their first language, but then also acquire that second language. So Andrea Lera is a seventh grader at White Oak Middle School. She's a cheer and choir. She's also a National Honor Society. She loves to sing especially to Taylor Swift. She looks forward to attending Infinity Early College when she grows up and she wants to be a doctor. So we're going to hear from her. She's going to tell us a little bit about how dual language has impacted her life.
Hi, I'm Andrea Lara. Well, my experience in dual language was awesome. I got to, my first language came Spanish. I didn't know that much English when I got to school and in dual language pre-K. I learned it pretty quickly, thanks to the teachers. Well, thanks to the teachers and basically the program because never would have gotten here without it. When I grow up, I want to be a doctor. The reason. The reason being, um, um, Tony. That back in Mexico, not that many people. The doctors, well, didn't help all that much. And I really want to give people in Mexico that opportunity that they don't. It costs a lot of money to just. Or, you know. To get a doctor and. I really want to give them that opportunity to know that there's someone who actually speaks their language. So they can. I just want to give people. A better opportunity than they had there.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? So you're in what grade?
I'm seventh grade.
You're in seventh grade. So do you have brothers and sisters in school?
I have no brothers.
You have a little brother. I can tell you must take good care of him. Is he in the program? No. So you have been in it since pre-K?
Yeah.
And was there a doctor or a teacher that told you besides your mom that you should be a doctor?
Probably.
Not really. You just think that's what you want to be. You want to stay here or you want to go to Mexico and be a doctor there?
Oh, Mexico must make like a little hospital there where no one has to pay.
Right. Just to take care of him. Well, we all think you're going to do just that. Wendy said in the medical profession, she probably thinks you can do it, but I think you can do whatever you say you want to. And you'll do just great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So, anything else that I say after this? Gabby, top of the point with what they've said. And honestly, I know that like our dual language program is amazing and I know that it's here because of the support that you all provide for our staff, for our teachers. But it goes further than just what happens between pre-K and your fifth grade. It's something that students are going to take with them and just continue to grow and live with for the rest of their lives. And it not only impacts their families, but it impacts the world. And it's crazy to think that something that we're doing that seems so small can be so big. But it's impacted, it's because of what you all help us and the support that you all provide and, you know, working as a team with their instructional team and everyone to make sure that our students and our teachers and staff have the resources that they need. And so thank you so much. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our professional development as well. Part of what we do is really provide support for our professional development, for our teachers. So we have our dual language teacher academy. So that's, you know, being a teacher is hard. And also, but what you add, being a dual language teacher, that adds another layer where you just have to look at things differently. And so that's something that my team, we work really hard to make sure that we're aligned throughout the district. We also provide training for our paraprofessionals. You've all heard about some amazing paraprofessionals today and how we want to keep them and we want to continue growing them. And so we pour into them and we want, we train them as much as we can to make sure that, you know, that they are being supported as well. They're the food that keeps us together at schools. And so we want to make sure that we're providing that training there. So that's something that we do. We also work with our ESL teachers in secondary. So those are teachers who are working with our newcomers. And so that's an important job a lot of the time. Those are the teachers that, you know, will impact those students because they're the connection, a first connection of coming to a new country. And I don't know anyone, I don't know the language, but here I have a teacher and a group that's going to help and support me. So we work with them as well. We work with our low teachers, religious Spanish and French teachers, and making sure that we're aligned. This past year, we did some work with our Spanish teachers to make sure that at the district, we're aligned with Spanish one. We're going to continue that work to make sure that we're aligning throughout the district. And then we work with our multilingual coaches. We're very honored and lucky to have those coaches at each campus. They have to be experts not only in specific subjects, but they really help to understand reading, math, science, social studies, all of those topics. And on top of that, see it from a language lens of that level deposition. So we support them as well. And then I wanted to bring up the bilingual, the self-certification. Last month, before you brought up something about providing, going to the state and sometimes, you know, Ms. Goode was talking about start testing and how, you know, sometimes you have that opportunity to share what you know maybe needs to change. And so I wanted to share, to take this opportunity to share that with you, that our bilingual teachers have to take a lot of tests. So as a teacher, you take a lot of tests. But then as a bilingual teacher, you have to take the spoken test, the BTOPT, and then you have to take a supplemental test. And so it's really hard to sometimes certify our teachers. So if you ever have that opportunity to speak to those committees, to whoever, and advocate for our teachers, for our bilingual teachers and our ESL teachers on the number of tests that are specifically our bilingual teachers have to take to become certified, it's five tests that they have to take. And usually they have a year and it's a challenge and it's money that puts out of their pocket. So if you can advocate for that as well, that would be amazing. That's just something else that that we support as well. And then I think this is one of my favorite, all of this is wonderful, but one of my favorite parts is working with our families and communities. And that's really what we are here for. So we have our multilingual showcase that we did last year and we'll continue that with that this year. And so basically it's showcasing whether students in dual language are doing, students like these two young ladies that are here. Our parent engagement, really supporting our parents with what do you need? Is it that you will need ESL classes and we need some skills on how to teach a second language, you know, those kinds of things. We also had our newcomer camp and that was specific for our secondaries. It was during the summer and we really worked with them to acquire that second language. But most of what I think, one of the biggest things that we did was provide support for them to, or not support, they went on a field trip. And it was the most eye-opening thing. You have to remember that a lot of these students that are coming as newcomers are secondary. So they're teenagers, some of them are high schoolers and they have to receive all of the high school credits to be able to graduate. And sometimes that feels impossible when you're learning a second language, you have to pass all of these tests. So we took them on a field trip to Lone Star College. And we, they went and they, they were, they couldn't believe, like, they were like, you mean I can do this? You mean there's something else that I can do? And so I feel like as educators, our job is to provide those opportunities to open up their mind that they can be, they could own a business or they can be conductive or whatever it may be regardless of where they came from. And we also took them to NASA and that was, that was pretty amazing to see them like, so they've never seen something like that. And so just providing those opportunities to them is something else that we did. And then we have our free duty college expo. So that again was another opportunity for our families to come, for our high school or secondary to come and find out what else can they do. But what was really interesting is that through this, it was actually the parents that were asking and finding and they wanted more information about how can I do this? What do you mean there's an opportunity for this? What do you mean? So it was really amazing and I believe that education changes your life. And for those parents and those families, this was another opportunity for them to kind of have a different mindset or viewpoint of where they can go. So moving forward, kind of what is it that we're going to do? We're going to continue with our multilingual showcase. We're going to continue with our community college expo and hopefully get other partnerships. Something else that we're doing this year is we're having a Dia de Niño, which is Children's Day. So in the, in our culture, in our American culture, we have grandparents' day and father's day and mother's day. In Latin American cultures, we have Dia de Niño to celebrate the kids. And so it's a way to celebrate kids. And we're going to work, I've been working with Michelle Rimmer, which is one of our pre-K specialists, to kind of figure out exactly what we're going to do. But it's really to celebrate kids. So that's something else that we're going to be working on. Our migrant students, again, those are the students that I talked about earlier that, you know, follow the crops and continue to support them, find out what their needs are and figure out what else do we need to support them? Is it, they're moving to another state and we need to figure out how they can take their savings that comes through Texas or is it clothes? Or what is it that they need exactly? And then really excited, our low teacher, we have one teacher that's really passionate, pushing towards having a spelling bee at Porter High School. And so this year, we're going to have a spelling bee within our district, within our secondary, a Spanish spelling bee, I should say. And then we're going to have a competition with the lead department. Oh, my goodness. So it's going to be really neat. So of course, we just want to continue growing our program and provide those opportunities for our parents, our teachers, or in our community. And so again, thank you so much. And I feel like with collaboration with our teachers, families and community, we'll continue growing all of our bilingual students.
Do you have any questions?
How long will you say a newcomer? How new is a newcomer?
They're three, one to three years.
Wait, you're a first grader. You mentioned that there are forty-three languages in our, in our district. How do we address the language with other than Spanish? Do we have speakers of all these other languages in our district?
No, but we don't necessarily have speakers of all of those other languages. But what we do have is teachers who are, can teach the second language. So you don't necessarily have to know the language. It's actually better if they don't know the language because they have to use other strategies of teaching to be able to address those needs of those students. So they use lots of visuals, lots of hands-on, lots of manipulative, so things that will help them communicate, help the student produce that second language.
I just wanted to try to the micro experience part of having done six years in the program, like how proud I am, like you say, filming to other districts and being able to say like, no, this is the program we have. Every student gets an opportunity, even the two-way inclusion, it has so many social benefits too. And I'm really proud we don't isolate one group of language speakers. We have that two-way communication with all students and has that social pass through. So thank y'all for what you do at that.
And I dealt with a lot of multicultural stuff. So you need to come see what it is that we want to do. You need to come see me at my office. We'll take care of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm next up on the agenda, but I'm going to delegate and switch over to Patty for it. But I'll, Mr. Patrus, all of that, not me. So he is going to announce our pumpkin contest winners. If you haven't had a chance, you can take a look at those around the corner back there. I love that our district is so competitive and it always brings out the best. So take a look if you had, but Mr. Patrus, all you.
I was sitting over there going, that's, I don't want to go there. I'm playing it till I start. Yes, if you haven't taken a look, please go look at those pumpkins. This is something that our department has started. It's the second year we've done it. We asked schools to decorate pumpkins. We work with HUB and Tinted Treats. HUB donates the pumpkins, Tinted Treats can provide twenty pumpkins to staff at school with some cookies just as a thank you. Plus the winning schools get to wear jeans for the rest of the semester, which is pretty exciting. So I'll get to it real quick. We had an elementary category, a secondary category. The funniest pumpkin for elementary was Ripken Elementary School. Most original went to Ben's Branch Elementary School. Ingenious use of pumpkin was Brooklyn Forest Elementary School. And then the overall winner for elementary was Oakley Elementary School for secondary. Secondary for funniest, we had Woodbridge Forest Middle School. And they also won original, most originals. So Woodbridge Forest Middle School won both those categories. Ingenious use of pumpkin was Porter High School with the smoke-filled cannon. And then the winning pumpkin was West Fork High School with their alligator. Congratulations to both schools. We'll be trying to get the pumpkin back to you in one piece, best of the year. Thank you very much.
Refit that, Mr. Patrus, and y'all, organize that. One final thing and then we'll move on. Y'all know we always reevaluate everything, you know? We always know what's best for kids or the district, you know? I said it before, I'll keep saying it until y'all run me out here. We do it better than most of actually doing what's best for kids in the district. We always tag on what's best for kids, sometimes it's what's best for adults. And so we hang our hat on doing what's best for kids. And so what I'm going to talk about for the next couple of minutes is something that has honestly been in the works since 2022. Our secondary principals that are here, this is something that quite honestly, they've been advocating for since prior to that time. And so, you know, this isn't just a wake up one morning and hey, let's do this kind of decision. And so there's been a lot of thought, prayer, just talking within this, you know, between our administrators and teachers, everybody. So what we're talking about is our secondary bill schedule. Right now, we operate on an A V day bill schedule, modified block. There's lots of different names and calling that. That's what we've been doing for some time now. And again, for some time, our principals and teachers have been saying, hey, can we, we need to try something different here. A lot of reasons that we needed to do something different, you know? What's the definition of it? Same, you have to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. So I appreciate these guys bringing these ideas to us because they want to get better. You know, we've got a great district, but we want an even better district. I appreciate our principals leaving charge in that. So with that said, again, in the 2425 school year, so no, we're not coming back in the spring or changing it tomorrow or anything like that. For the 2425 school year, our secondary schools will. For the 2425 school year, our secondary schools will move to a eight-period day. Each of those periods being 45 minutes in length. It's a traditional schedule. I would probably venture to say most of the people sitting in this room would raise your hand and say, oh yeah, I remember that one in school. And so we started this process again back in the spring in 2022. We had principals, we had coaches, we had CTE folks, we had non-artists folks, structured on coaches. I think there was about 35 people on that committee. So, you know, it was in a really tight group. We got a lot of different perspectives from all of our campuses, so a very thorough process. You know, there's a lot of considerations when you make this kind of decision. Like I said, I promise you, I don't wake up and say, hey, let's do this for the fun of it. There's potentials for instructional now. How can we get our kids in class? How can we get our teacher to refer our kids? Well, I was looking at that. There's a human resource element to it. You can ask Michelle that, they're almost the biggest part of our budget, so we want to make sure we're maximizing our people to the fullest extent possible. And then, as you heard, denying options and choices and everything, our district does a really good job of providing opportunities for our kids. And so there's definitely a balance between all that. And I think our secondary folks have done a really good job of honoring that. And so just some highlights of what the eight-period day will bring, starting next year, is students get to see every teacher every day. Anybody think, oh, that's a hell of a concept? Well, it doesn't happen right now. Under an eight-period day, they can see every teacher every day. It equalizes instruction between core classes and extracurricular. You know, it balances those minutes out, you know, all of our programs are important. Or curriculum is important as well. So it does all that, it balances those minutes. And then a daily schedule, you know, seeing kids every day, that 45-minute block, you know, it's more time on task. You know, I'm going to be 42 years old and I don't know if I can sit still for an hour and a half focused, much less a 12-year-old. All right? And so it really benefits our kids, time on task, teachers teaching more effectively. And it also has the potential to lend itself to smaller class sizes. And my not sit here and say, oh yes, you're going to have smaller class size. Oh no, but busy secondary folks would be okay with saying, you said it. It does have that potential though. So we do recognize that. And then one of the things that this district has done in the past, within that schedule, is the state graduation part. We, in my opinion, kind of shot ourselves in the foot. This helps us align better with the state 26 credit plan. Our job is to get kids graduated out here, prepare them for the world outside of our four walls. And this plan actually helps them accomplish that better. So again, this, this is a change, obviously, you know, I didn't count the calendar dates between today and when the calendar gets August 24. But we want to give our principals enough time to plan, our parents enough time to think about it, our kids enough time to digest it. Again, it's a big decision. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes on, force selection, all that kind of good stuff. How these guys build a master schedule is just simply amazing. That's why I'm an elementary guy, I'm a secondary guy, so kudos to you. There's a lot that goes into this, but this is something they've been talking about for a while and we truly feel it's in the best interest of our, our students and our community to truly balance the academics and extracurriculars in our district while also maintaining those kids' choices. So again, this is for the 2425 school year. It's been a long time in the making and so the folks that have really, you know, brought this idea up, I know a lot of few of them are here tonight, so if you want to say something, you can. If I miss something, feel free to fill in the blanks or if you just want to give me a high, high amen, move on, that's still there. Any of my secondary folks want to say anything? All right. They'll tell me more, but that's all. Okay, and then another thing, again, we're always looking at, we listen, how can we improve? We listen, how can we improve? And so another thing we are going to change again for the 2425 school year, again, not going to happen tomorrow, not going to happen in the spring, happen next year, is our start stop times. Trust me, again, a decision that I don't wake up and say, no, can I do that today? No, we don't. But again, it's what we feel is in the best interest of our kids and ultimately our parents, our community. And so our start stop times for next year, we're going to switch them up a little bit. When you hear all of them, you know, you're maybe talking 15 minutes. It takes me 15 minutes to get through Mr. Bar's drop-off line sometimes in the morning. So again, it's not, it's not that big of a change. But our, our high schools next year, they're going to start at 7:45 and get out at 3:10. Our middle schools will start at seven and get out at 2:25. Our elementary schools will start at 8:30 and get out at 3:55. And yes, if you're thinking, oh my gosh, I'll just did that? Yes, we did. It still sits consistent with that message. We want our older kids to be home before those elementary kids show up. And so that still stays true to that. And we also, again, just like I talked about the schedule, we want our kids to be in class. And so by having the high school and middle school come first, those extracurricular activities that they love and are so successful at, they can still minimize the time that they miss out classes or participation. So again, it's a shift, it's a good shift, but we do feel it's in the best interest of our students, our staff, our campuses. We feel like that's a couple of report. A couple of other pros of the three start stop times is we can go to three-tier buses. And what does that mean? Well, that's means more availability of buses, shorter time on buses, fewer kids on buses. Mr. Carroll's in the back of the room and he, him and his team in transportation, they survived the first month of school. And obviously they were to survive. They do their best again, they do a great job of getting kids to school and from school safely every day. But we know there's, we have to look at other options. And so, you know, this is an idea that, you know, we're not, hey, we're changing these start stop times, we can put three tiers in, we can spread the love out a little bit between those three wrap times. We're good, so we feel like that helps. And then, you know, sometimes I ask the question, oh, why are you putting those schools first? Really, that is because when you get to our high school level with our extracurriculars and things like that, if I dump all of our high school extracurriculars after school, you think, okay, we just passed the bond, we've got all these facilities. Well, again, opportunities, there's literally not enough places in our high schools to have to put all the teams at one time after school. So again, we're, we're spreading that out a little bit. So it's, you know, these are two big decisions, two decisions that, you know, I appreciate the conversations that these groups, districts have had up here. We've got workshops about it, not just this year, but the prior years, principals have been there to give their input and everything. Of course, Gavin, there's a lot of different angles around it, there's HR component, finance component, transportation component. A lot of different things went into this decision. So while I'm bottling it up in this short report, just know that it'll work and the conversations that they had, that we're confident in this and we feel like it's best for the kids in our district. So again, 2425, eight-period day, new start stop times, starts August 24. Any questions?
And again, like Mr. Carroll was saying, it's something they just threw out there, gave to us this month and said, this is what we're going to, this is what we've been talking about for a long time, just haven't looked at it. You know, with all the school buses and, you know, Mr. Carroll, we tried to buy school buses and we just now finally got one of the last six. Yeah, that's, you know, that was, those were ordered in '21. So we just got those six that we bought in '21. Trying to make it better so the kids aren't hot on school bus and deal with everything else. Again, like Mr. Turner said, we appreciate everything Duquesne I S D does because y'all work so tirelessly, tirelessly on all these different things that we're trying to get right for our kids, to make our kids better, to build up, to have a better Texas, to have a better community later on. Because our kids are taught and raised the right way to make everything better for them. So this wasn't just thrown out there, I'm sure we're going to get, so the social media pages are going to attack us with it. It is what it is, we all feel that this was the best thing for our kids.
All right, item six on the agenda is the consent counter, consisting of consideration of events, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of construction items, consideration of public information items, and consideration of adoption of prevailing legal rights. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item's only consent? Motion to move in second, but we need further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Close. Motion is approved. Item seven on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551074 for the purpose of pressing on matters, Government Code 551071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551076 for liberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board convenes an open meeting. Time is 7:00 PM. 7:55 PM and will now convene an open session. Item made on the agenda is consideration approval to award agreement with B R W Architects for architectural services to design and construct a new elementary school building procurement method on 2023 Duquesne Elementary School number 12.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, we're asking the board to approve and consider giving B R W Architect contract to Duquesne Elementary for all. Can you get that going toward a kind of start of the pre-lent formalizing contracts and kind of working the schedule right now? Request the board to approve.
Any questions? Is there a motion to award a grant to B R W Architects for architectural services to design, construct, and do elementary school building procurement method on 2023 Duquesne Elementary School number 12? Second. Motion to move in second, but we need further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. Item nine on the agenda is consideration approval of selection and agreement with B R W Architects for architectural services for Duquesne I S D Alternative School and Special Program relocation on 2023.
Yes, thank you. Again, again, for consideration, we want to go ahead and put on contract with B R W Architects and proceed forward with converting the existing Porter Elementary School to be configured to allocate these programs, the alternative school and the special program. Already started the initiation, they've actually locked the building up last week, so it's going to start taking place as well. So again, we're asking the construction company to have a board approve this route and proceed forward.
Yeah, the, the programs that we're in, you know, now there is our elementary school. We're going to move that into our location today, Duquesne I S D. And to walk in Porter, it will be to your right.
Altar Elementary School, A C L C.
Correct. And then on the other half of the campus, we are looking at putting a special ed, NTSAs, basically an off-site behavior unit. On that, what that program is, what acronym it's assigned, all that kind of good stuff. But we have, obviously, there are challenges we're facing right now with behaviors in the classroom. We realize the need to have an off-site behavior program. And so one half of this school, to your left, towards the church, that would be the behavior unit to the right. Is there a motion to approve the selection and agreement with B R W Architects for architectural services for Duquesne I S D Alternative School and Special Program relocation on 2023? Motion to move in second, but we need further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. There, being known for their business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:59.